But the.
Excuse me. Good evening, I'm going to call the Moore County Board of Education Work Session and Public Hearing on, on the redistricting to order. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, five zero. Judge of allegiance?
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's observe a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to acknowledge Pam Thompson is here. She is, will be sworn in in early December as our newest Board of Education member. So thank you for coming and being a part of this process. And I want to thank the rest of you for braving the miserable weather out there this evening. So I guess it's not snow, so that's something to look forward to.
Amen.
Amen. Dr. Grimacy, we have one item on the agenda for discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, as is appropriate for all public hearings, it's helpful to begin with a brief review of what it is people are commenting on. And so especially given the weather and the turnout, I think allowing John to, John Barath, John if you, John Barath and Tim Locklayer to give us a summary that might allow a few more minutes in case anybody else would like to, is on their way and they're going to show up, but also serve the purpose for the public record of providing a summary of what it is we're inviting people to comment on tonight. So Tim and John, we'll turn it over to you guys, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy, Madam Chair, Board, good evening. As Dr. Grimacy has noted, John and I would like to take just a brief moment or two to do a, give an overview of the plan that was presented to you at your board meetings in November that you endorsed to get additional public input. And tonight is certainly one of those last opportunities for significant public input from the final draft staff plan, superintendent's plan that was presented to you and you endorsed for public input in November. We want to review the process with you, want to review the overall final plan that was presented, final staff plan that was presented to you and just take a few minutes to do that. We have a summary of the plan that was presented by Mike Miller and Laura Evans, our partners, our consulting partners with Numerex who helped us through this process and we do want to walk through that overview with you very quickly. We'll talk a little bit about the process itself, the process that we went through throughout, throughout the process with our stakeholders and with, with you as the board and talk about how we gathered guiding factors to come up with guiding principles that drove that process. And then I'm going to hand it off to John and let him talk about those final staff plan that was presented to you, look at the data and look at the map that was presented. That process has begun with you back in June. We presented the programal process and then engaged with you and one of the first things that you felt very important, very important piece of the process was getting an advisory committee together to help drive that process. And so in June, after presenting the overall, beginning with the end in mind of what we wanted to accomplish, we then connected with an advisory committee and talked about what are the factors that we want to drive this process and from that, that feedback from you and working with the advisory committee, we came up with the guiding principles that you approved in July. And those guiding principles have really helped drive the process and were used throughout the process of coming up with this student assignment plan. Once those guiding principles were decided, we then worked throughout August to come in September with the first draft. And we noted throughout the process that this is an iterative process. This is a draft that we're going to continue to refine and get feedback on until we move through the final steps of the process. After that first draft was presented in September, we had the opportunity of getting feedback through a couple different opportunities, through online portal, which we gathered feedback there, we gathered feedback at community input meetings and then we also gathered continued feedback from our advisory committee. We came back in October, presented the second iterative draft of the student assignment plan, gathered again feedback through an online portal, through community input meetings, brought that analysis back to our advisory committee, which consisted of parents, consisted of school leaders, teachers, as well as board representatives, and then brought a final staff plan to you at your October 29 work session. That final staff plan or superintendent's recommendation was presented and endorsed by you to get additional public input. And so those guiding principles that we talked about in that process really were important throughout. And there were four guiding principles that you endorsed. Those were balance, planning, efficiency, and community. Balance including building utilization, program opportunities, student demographic factors, efficiency, including optimal efficiency and making sure we optimize operations. Planning including using the best data possible and being sensitive to community needs. And community included the engagement with the community, being transparent and, and making sure we involve in our stakeholders. Those top four bullets in the top corner of this also talked about how there's no intended priority of these guiding principles. We talked about how some of these guiding principles may overlap from time to time and some guiding principles may conflict. In addition, some assignment solutions may not realize guiding principles to the full extent and guiding principles are dependent on the schools impacted by the assignment plan. But these guiding principles were leveraged throughout the process and were looked at as each iterative draft was presented. After the final, the second draft, there were refinements to that and then the final staff draft was presented. And John's going to talk about that, talk about what, what that looked like and then the actual map itself until we turn it over to you to open up the public hearing, John?
I'll use his notes. That's not nice. We'll just hope that works. Okay, so as Tim said, each draft went through a series of refinements. And from one version to the other, there were significant changes and adjustments. One of the things you've noticed in the final superintendent staff recommended version for the student assignment area is we went back to the basic reason as to why we are building this school. And it is to bring relief to Farm Life Elementary and the vast Lakeview Elementary. So when we went back to the root reason for this, because the earlier versions recognized some broader opportunities to achieve balance and to achieve the other parts of the guiding principles, we realized that we need to go back to why we did this to begin with. And when we did, it really refined the solution that was brought before you as this is the right step to take at this time. Because during the process, we recognized that there's some areas within vast Lakeview and some areas within Farm Life, attendance areas, that might change when we take a look at the next step phase. That when we do phase two here coming up early next year, that there are some that might shift students to schools such as maybe to, whether they go to Southern Pines, maybe they end up going to the new school on Camp Easter Road, maybe they go to Cameron, maybe they go to Carthage, and we'll talk more about that later. But we got back to understand that we need to hold some of these existing boundaries where they are so we can purposely address them in the next phase. So the data, and we always, as Laura likes to say, we always go back to look at the data. The data is going to tell us how we're doing. And when we took a look at this final recommended version to it, the top chart is always existing and the bottom chart is what the proposed draft has proposed in there for the numbers. You see across the columns with minority, utilizations, and proficiency in the ELA area, you see a closer tighter range in those in the bottom chart than you do in the top. We also see in here, and we talked about this, that Cameron Elementary, while its current capacity is limited to the number of classrooms they have built out there, 284, that we can improve on that by moving a six classroom modular unit from Northmore High School to Cameron because its core capacity can sustain 400 students. And that's why in the column of capacity 21 to 22, you see that number change. So when you come across there, you see upon opening of the new school on Camp Easter Road, it would be at 68% of its capacity. You see how it brings relief to the others and you notice in there that vast Lakeview is remaining at 95%. We also noticed that in 21, 22, it goes to 103%. And these are consistent with the other drafts and the versions we looked at. ORED's report has consistently demonstrated that that area of the county is going to grow and we will need to do something at a future point there. There are some things we could do in the next step in phase two to possibly bring additional relief to vast Lakeview, but it will continue to grow. So in draft three, we have tightened the differences in the columns of minority and proficiency and better balanced our utilization. The map on the left represents existing and indicates the boundaries there by the colors of the attendance areas for the elementary. And the map on the right indicates in yellow the new attendance area for the school on Camp Easter Road. And you can see all the existing attendance area boundaries for Cameron and for Carthage remain the same. They stay consistent in this step. You see also the attendance boundary between Farm Life and vast Lakeview remains the same in this proposed step. So we are looking again to bring better balance and capacity utilization at Farm Life and vast Lakeview through this. The next chart goes a little further out to demonstrate to 23, 24, what potentially this new attendance area would look like if nothing else was done. And I would draw your attention to the fact that vast Lakeview does creep up in the bottom chart in 23, 24 to 117% capacity. The new elementary school is projected to be at 77%, meaning that there remains capacity there. Farm Life at 83%, Cameron at 71%, and Carthage at 80. There is some opportunity in the next step to take a look at what can happen with those available seats and what it would mean district-wide. The, pardon me. The larger picture, this next step we're going to take is going to continue to monitor our trends. We are tracking them, we have our date 20 numbers, we have our geo-coding for where every student resides. We know our out of attendance area attendees coming to schools and how many within the attendance area are going to that school. We're able to build upon that. We're going to continue to monitor the full implementation of K3 class size reduction and any potential impacts to any of the other schools across the district that they may, that may have. As I mentioned, there are opportunities through, as you saw in the capacity utilization numbers, there's the opportunity at those other schools. And to remember that the new school on Camp Easter Road resides in the Southern Pines attendance area right now. It's right on the border, it's right there in there. So there is a very strong likelihood that in this next step, we will see some adjustments in Southern Pine students potentially going to the school. So when they, when we talked about that, we want to draw your attention to some of the areas here that we have acknowledged that we did not want to violate the board's directive and guiding principle of moving students only once. And so we have this area of the Sand Hills Farm Life on the lower left quadrant that indicated over and over through all our analysis that it has a potential to move to one of three locations. Either it can move to the new school on Camp Easter Road, it can move to the new Southern Pines Elementary, or it can remain and stay in the Farm Life School District. That's not something we can predict and do right now and so we wanted to recognize that as something that we would do in the next step. The same thing of the area along Race Bridge Road. It too was showing fluctuation between staying in Farm Life or going to the new school on Camp Easter Road. We felt that it was appropriate to make that decision in the next phase. On the northern part, along Joel Road, that was starting to show indication of potential balance of use to either the Cameron or the Carthage area. And again, without getting into that detail during this phase, it becomes a strong potential impact to consider when we look at the next step, which is all schools. And the area between Cameron and vast Lakeview, you'll recall that one of the previous recommendations did indicate this going to Cameron. But again, we felt that in order to give it the right move with purpose for the board to do, we did not want to jeopardize moving those students now to have them move again a second time. So these identified four areas are the ones that we will be revisiting as we move into the next phase. The timeline, we're at that point. We have had our portal, as Tim mentioned, open online for feedback from the community. It closed today. We are going to take all those comments and comments received tonight and assemble them for the board. Then they will be presented to the board at their work session coming up in December. And any adjustments or changes that the board would like to make at that time, Numerex will be there and we will make those changes. We will then come back at the December 10 board regular business meeting for the board to take action on the recommended plan. This was brief, it took much longer for Mike and Laura to go over, but Tim and I are here to answer the questions you may have.
John, if I, if I could, Madam Chair, just for anybody who's just now tuning into this, right towards the end of it and wondering what we mean by the next phase, the next phase of planning will be in the spring. But our intention with that phase is then to look beyond the 2019, 20 school year. We're not going to be bringing recommendations to the school board that will affect the coming school year. We're talking about the year after next and beyond. So we, we could have a three-year plan of different phases so that everybody sees well in advance what could occur, they have the opportunity to weigh in on that and do the best we can to try to accommodate as many interests as we can. Oftentimes they're competing interests. But the, the point I want to make clear is, is that when we refer to the next phase, the next phase of planning will be in the spring and that planning will then drive the assignments that will, that will then take place in 2021 and maybe 21, 22 and perhaps beyond, but certainly 2021 and 21, 22. So that's, I want everybody to think that we're waiting until the spring to make more decisions about next year. When the board acts in December, that'll be the final action that affects 19, 20.
Thank you, and I apologize, I do take it for granted, we've been living this so often and I did forget to clarify that for the next phase with bringing on three new additional schools with larger capacities than they currently have and the opportunities that bring for the next phase to begin.
But it is true that we're being cautious for maybe moving a step slower than other counties might do because we recognize that there's going to be potential for further decisions and we don't want to move any child twice. So we're, we're going to move slowly and then try to avoid anybody moving twice.
Are there any questions or comments from board members?
I don't have any questions at this point, I think you've been very thorough in the process and, and very clear about the steps that have to be taken. I do applaud attempting to not move any child but one time because we know we want to get them settled and teachers settled and begin the process of educating them in these new buildings or in the newly re-managed buildings that will be available as we go on.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, the only other comment I would say is I really appreciate all the effort that went in to coming up with these plans and listening to the community up until now and in today's public hearing as well. It appears to me that the, the planning process worked because it identified that we needed to go into a phase two and that was part of what we learned from what we did in the first part of this year or in the, in the fall. So it seems to me that that really opened up our eyes to additional work that needed to happen and I think that was a good outcome of the process is that, that you learned that and went back, back and looked at the plan, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, I, I would like to make a couple of comments also. I, I, I really like the flexibility because we know things are moving fast and that will help us a lot in making future decisions. I also like the balance that I'm seeing, I truly believe this plan will be, benefit by far more of our students than it would. The majority of our students will benefit muchly from this and people out there who haven't been in education for a long time or don't understand this stuff probably don't think that may not be true, but in my, in my years of experience, it works well, thank you.
So I see some folks have come in since John started talking. So first I want to recognize, it looks like, and it's hard to see, that, that all three of our principals are here of the impacted schools. So I see Lisa Scott back there from vast Lakeview, Dr. Molly Capps, the newly identified principal for the new Area One School, and we're going to come up with a name for you real soon. I'm tired of saying the new Camp Easter Road Area One School. And then I also see Ms. Nora McNeil back there from Sand Hills Farm Life. Did I miss anyone else that walked in that I needed to recognize? Somewhat dark. I would also ask the board, since we did have some, it looked like some public, new public had come in, may we take a short break and ask if anybody else wants to come and sign up to speak? For those of you that came a little bit late, we did, normally we collect this beforehand, but I'm willing to open this back up again if the board is in agreement.
Sure.
If anybody else would like to sign up.
Why don't we just ask if anybody would like to sign up? I don't think we even have to take a break.
Or if you're willing to speak, why don't you just come and sit up front? And then we'll just, yeah, come and sit up front if you're here to speak. And then that way I know who to call on. I know the weather was terrible today, so I appreciate everybody's effort. Okay, I will now turn it over to you, Madam Chair.
Well, it appears that we have two people here to speak for the public hearing. And the first one who has signed up is Jacqueline Moore. So if you'd like to take the podium, a reminder that your time is limited to three minutes for individual speaker and we ask you abide by that time period.
Sure thing. Thank you for letting me speak. I am a resident on the border of the new Area One School. I have a rising kindergartner for the school year this coming fall. We live in a small community, it's off of Highland Hills Golf Course, not bordering any other communities in that area. And we, as a community, I'm kind of our spokesperson here tonight, we're hoping to be considered for the new Area One. We're currently in the district for Southern Pines, but are located right off of the Niagara Carthage Road and expect that bus traffic would easily be able to be routed through our community and then go to the Area One, which would be the closest school to our community. We have probably 10 elementary aged children currently in our community and we have teachers that teach at the Cranes Creek, so.
Jacqueline, could you close the microphone?
Sorry. We have a teacher that teaches at the Cranes Creek Middle School in our community and so another benefit to having our kids be in a school district aligned with that middle school so that we could have our children going to the schools where their teachers are in our community. That's really all I came to say, it was my, my little bid for our little community to be considered for the district and I did make comments in the online forum, so you'll be getting that as well. But if you have any questions for me, I am happy to answer or just let you consider.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Jen Wright.
Good evening, sorry for the, the late appearance. I first wanted to first and foremost say thank you for taking the time to further develop those four areas that are in question of what's the right move. I know in reading some of the public comments and speaking to residents in the area, they felt that maybe a little more time could make a better decision for the students. And so I appreciate the board recognizing that and being able to say, let's look at this a little bit further, see what kind of progression we may have that may factor into that decision. So I just wanted to say thank you for taking the opportunity to do that, to recognize that and to kind of show the community that these meetings weren't just a check-in-the-box kind of scenario that their voices were heard. And I think that speaks volumes for the board and it also shows that you are connected with the community. with the community. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you publicly for hearing us and those who have had concerns about those areas in question, to make sure that we're making the right decision for the kids. Thank you.
All right, so going once, going twice.
Anybody else?
Anyone else that would like to speak? All right, that ends our public address.
First of all, I just want to do thank all of you who are here for coming to listen and to understand what it is that we're trying to accomplish with this new redistricting plan. So I appreciate all of your attendance, and for those of you who chose to speak, thank you for speaking up and making your voice heard. We're going to end today with Board comments. Do we have any comments?
We are listening.
No, no other comments here.
Yes, Dr. Dennison.
Mr. Pennigan, do you have a comment?
Thanks to all of you who came out tonight. And I want to echo what Jen said. This has not been taken lightly, and Ed and I have served in redistricting capacity before, and I would say that this has been a more thorough and more transparent process than we've seen in the past.
Likewise.
And I hope the public took advantage of the opportunities to express their opinions. Ms. Moore, thank you very much. Because the Board does listen and does react and adapt, and we've seen what Draft Three, I suppose, I mean, it's conceivable there could be Draft 3.25 or something. But I join Mr. Dennison in saying that this has been a very well-thought-out process, and it's harder than it appears like it should be to balance all this because you move something over here, that moves something over there. And there's what, one more opportunity at our, there'll be a public hearing, I mean, a public comment on 10th, right before we vote.
On the night that the Board will actually take action, there'll be a final debate on the public comment on any topic, including this one.
Right.
But we would hope that if somebody wants to affect any change, they
Give us a heads up now.
That they will have brought that up by tonight because it is, this isn't one of those decisions where in 24 hours, you just turn things around. We've been on this for five months, and so we're hoping that tonight's an indication that the web portal has been effective for those who couldn't come or, you know, for whatever reason prefer to comment through that, and that the empty room that we have tonight, obviously we prepared for a larger crowd, but I'd like to think that there's satisfaction with the plan and/or with the web portal as a means to communicate. So certainly, speaking on behalf of the staff, we welcome anybody to may come at any time, but it's quite inconvenient if you wait until the night of the decision to offer that. So we hope that that input has been had already.
Well, one thing we can point out to everyone, that at our work session, we will take the comments that have been made up to now, and we will discuss those at our work session before any final, anything is reached on what we're going to do at our regular meeting. So you can certainly watch our work session and hear the discussion and the comments that are brought up and what transpires there, which is live streamed.
Madam Chair, for Mike?
Yes.
It is the Board's practice to not respond to speakers when we have public hearings, and it's not my intention to break a tradition, but having had only two speakers, we've got an extra minute. So I would like to use Ms. Moore's comments as an opportunity to sort of spotlight an assumption that the staff is taking forward, and that is that if there are families that are so close to the new school on the Southern Pine side, that they have a high degree of confidence that their child will go to the school, we welcome them to contact the Office of Student Support Services after Christmas in January. Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have a process, if you just had a new kindergartner coming, Ms. Moore, you wouldn't know. We have what's called a
Transfer.
Transfer, student transfer process. And so if you've had children in the school, you know about this. If you don't, you'd want to get somebody to breathe you on it. But what you'd want to do is talk to us and see and measure for yourself what the possibility is that maybe your child would end up at the school anyhow the next year, and then you and your husband could decide, you know, how you might want to use that process as a way of accessing the school, even if you're not included in the plan. Because all schools will be looked at for that next phase. And so, of course, we think the Southern Pine schools are quite exciting, and I'd have my children there, but that's a process that you and your neighbors could consider. And would it be Dr. Powers's office that they would inquire with?
Yeah.
Would it be Dr. Powers? You can check with somebody before you leave tonight. We give you contact information.
And the process is online too?
Yeah, it is.
On a website.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And thank you.
Want to advertise that opportunity.
I think that's important, and there will be deadlines coming up for that, usually in February. So do look at that in January to get a sense of what that looks like. Are there no further comments? I want to, I'm sorry. Oh, Ms. Warren, thank you for letting us use your school again. It is a beautiful facility. We are lucky to have it. Thank you.
And one more, Madam Chair?
And the IT staff.
And the IT staff.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Dennison. That's what I was going to say, IT staff, but everybody.
And everyone else, yeah. All our staff.
We planned for a room full of people, and that includes our IT staff and even the custodial staff here at Carthage Elementary, Ms. Warren. Look, Catherine's all set up there. Mary Kate showed up. But we, you know, we planned for a larger turnout, and so it took a lot of effort to be here this evening. I just want to thank everybody who contributed to what really is one of the best setups we've ever had here at Carthage Elementary. Yeah, compliments to Mr. Eckland and the IT staff. The new mics are making it a lot easier to address the public.
And I'm sure there are folks that are watching live stream from the comfort of their own home.
And we may, may not be jealous.
Yeah. But we thank you all for coming out and for participating in this process, and we look forward to the next step.
Madam Chair.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries.